Before we get started, I'd like for everyone up here to introduce themselves for those that are watching so they know who's working in their behalf. So we'll start on this end.
Leslie Herbie, Assistant to the Clerk.
Chacalyn Panietto, Clerk of the Board.
Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Attorney General, Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Reese will be on her way. I am Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, President of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see everyone here. We have a full agenda. I would also like to take a moment to recognize Ms. Panietto and just know that our prayers are with you and your family as she suffers bereavement in her family. So if everyone could please think of her, I would appreciate it. I'm sure she would also. If you've got a copy of the agenda, we're going to sort of go out of order. There are some things that came up that we need to deal with right away. And item five is our executive session. And we're going to go directly into our executive session. I'm hoping it should not be long, and we'll be back to get started on the regular items that are on our staff agenda. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning pending or imminent litigation.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. We shall be right back. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to open up our regular staff meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. We have before us a resolution that we need to pass before we move forward. It is, I make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the employment of special counsel to provide legal services to the board and county employees.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move forward with our regular agenda. First item on our agenda is an update on COVID-19. Commissioner Gray Casterman.
Thank you very much. I can tell I'm going to need Bridget's help again. The little advancer is not advancing. Just quit. Well, she's starting there. I'd like to first acknowledge, often I'm down here by myself, but today Dr. Jennifer Mooney from my team is here. She's been with us throughout the entire pandemic and has been a major player in our efforts. She's here for a later item on the agenda, but I just wanted to acknowledge that she's here and publicly say thank you for all of your hard work throughout the pandemic.
Great.
It's been quite a journey.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. So here in Hamilton County, we continue to see more and more activity since the last time I was here two weeks ago. We now are up to 5,100 active cases of COVID-19 within Hamilton County. On the next slide, you can see that we are at about 202 cases per day. That's a seven-day average. The good news, actually, I'm sorry, we are at 193 cases per day. Just a few days ago, we were at 202 cases per day. So I'm a little hopeful that this is a plateau, and maybe we'll start heading in the right direction, but it is definitely too early to make that assumption at this point in time. On the next slide, you can see our percent positivity is around 9.3%. So this continues to hover right around nine over the last few days. This is for the 14-county region. Here in Hamilton County, we're a little closer to about 8.5% positivity of all tests being performed. Similar to case numbers, our reproductive value is at 1.02 for Hamilton County, and for the region, we are at 1.09. So as those cases kind of plateaued, on the next slide, sorry, Bridget, as our cases kind of plateaued, we started to see that reproductive number plateau as well. I would anticipate, if we continue to see cases decrease, that this number will drop below one, showing some positive signs that the pandemic is heading in the right direction again. But I think it's, as mentioned, a little too early to tell on that. On the next slide, you can see hospitalizations, and these continue to climb at a significant rate. We are at 332 people within our 14-county system. 109 are in the ICU, and 77 are on ventilators. And when talking with folks in leadership in our hospital systems, the thing that's most concerning is the steepness of that curve. Each day, 10, 15 new people are admitted into the hospital systems. So it's definitely adding stress to the system. There's still capacity, but it's increasing significantly. I think also worth pointing out, and I know I say this a lot, but folks that are in the hospital predominantly are not vaccinated. The vaccine, and I have a slide for this in a little bit, the vaccine is extremely effective at keeping people out of the hospital. There are very few breakthrough cases for folks that have been vaccinated. Here is a breakdown by age of those in our hospital system. The entire bar represents the state of Ohio. The dark shaded area represents southwest Ohio. You can see the greatest impact continues to be those between the ages of 50 and 69. On the next slide, this is Centers for Disease Control, their color coding system. Hamilton County remains a county of high incidence. We have 169.55 cases per 100,000. In addition, as mentioned, our percent positivity for the county as calculated by CDC is 8.84. And because we are a county of high transmission, the recommendation from CDC, and echoed by Hamilton County Public Health, is that masks be worn in public places at all times. And this is because we know that masks slow the transmission of COVID-19. Shifting now to vaccinations, the good news is the Centers for Disease Control yesterday approved the Pfizer vaccine, full approval. Now, I haven't seen a significant jump in our clinic vaccination numbers yet, but we know that this was at least one reason people said that they were hesitating to get vaccinated. So I'm extremely excited. We know with the FDA approval that they have the data to support this vaccine. We know that they have the data to support the effectiveness and the manufacturing. So just one more piece of information to help folks get through that finish line, make the decision to get vaccinated. In Hamilton County, we are at 54% of our total population being vaccinated. And when you look at those over the age of 12, we're at about 62%. So we continue to make progress. On the next slide, you can see the, and one more click, you can see that those over the age of 70, or I'm sorry, those over the age of 60 are at 70% vaccinated. And we are almost there for that 50 to 60 age group. We're continuing to monitor and message and continue to try and get more age groups over the finish line. And we're hoping in the coming weeks and months, we'll make more progress. On the next slide, you can see we continue to make progress week after week, particularly in those young age groups. So the 20-year-olds, 30-year-olds, the 40-year-olds, we're seeing greatest vaccination rates at this time. I'll spend just a moment and talk about breakthrough cases. I continue to get a lot of questions. I see social media that kind of doubts the vaccine because somebody knows somebody who got sick with COVID-19. We knew from the day that the vaccine rolled out, that the Pfizer vaccine, for example, was 95% effective. What that means simplistically is that five out of 100 people who have COVID will get sick, or I'm sorry, five out of 100 people who get vaccinated will get sick with COVID. We knew that on day one. The good news is the majority of those will not get severe illness. And so that plays out time after time after time. Bridget, if you'd hit advance twice. So looking in Ohio, we don't look at the number of individuals that break through just with COVID. We look at them as hospitalizations and deaths. We know that there's about 2.6% of people that have been vaccinated that have broke through and become hospitalized. So out of 100 people, 98 people have not been vaccinated in the hospital systems. This is straight from the Ohio Department of Health. In addition of the deaths reported since January 1, 99 people who have died have not been vaccinated out of 100. So we know the effectiveness of the vaccine. We know how good this vaccine is. So to help continue to encourage folks to get vaccinated, we are now incentivizing all of the mobile units. We're providing for my three mobile units and also for the 513 Relief Bus, monies from the Ohio Department of Health, $100 Visa gift cards for your first vaccination. So if somebody wants to get vaccinated, they can come, and we can get them $100 gift cards. So we're excited to roll this out, and roll it out this weekend, and we plan to continue this for hopefully months to come. Couple more slides. One deals with the difference between the third round and the booster. So the third round shot is already available for people that have the conditions listed on the slide, including organ transplant donors and those with immune deficiencies. That is only for Pfizer and Moderna. We anticipate in a few weeks, maybe with a little more data, the J&amp;J vaccine as well. Booster shots are not yet approved. That is for folks who have already been vaccinated, and it's eight months after your vaccine has been given. And that is anticipated for Pfizer and Moderna, September 20th, but still pending on the EUA from the FDA. The last two slides I have deal with quarantine. I've had a lot of questions over the last couple of weeks about who has to quarantine. Quarantine standards have not changed at all. So if, Bridget, if you would click just a few slides. One more, there you go, one more time. All right. So in this case, the person who is the case has COVID-19. The two individuals, B and C, were within that six-foot bubble for 15 minutes over two days. They would be required to quarantine with or without a mask. And that's based on how we know COVID spreads. The individuals outside of that six-foot bubble would not be required to quarantine. On the next slide, if you're vaccinated, individuals B and C need to watch for symptoms, but they are not required to quarantine. So a big distinction, and actually quite another benefit of getting vaccinated. Just one more reason to consider. Those are all the slides I have. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Casterman, and such a great report. And you make it easy to understand. So thank you every time you come in. I certainly appreciate it. And I'm sure that people that are listening also appreciate it. I'll open it up right now for any questions from our colleagues. But if there's any media here that would like to ask one question for each, whoever you represent, you're certainly welcome to do that, because I know you were able to do that during our briefings. So I don't see any media. So Vice President Reese, did you have any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Casterman. Let me say that you have given a lot of reports on a regular basis. But I will have to say, this report here, there is so much that has changed in two weeks than your last report. I mean, there's a lot of very in-depth information that you presented today, and showing that how fast this virus is changing in a rapid speed. I did have a couple of questions. So it is good news that Pfizer is FDA-approved. But for people who may be watching and may not understand that, usually when things are FDA-approved, usually the drug is more expensive. Could you maybe talk about that? Is FDA-approved, but we still will be offering this? And is there some cost that we have to be concerned about? Because usually when the FDA gets in, those, you know, meds go up a big amount of money.
Yep. So at this point, the vaccine itself is free, and it's provided by the federal government. Vaccine providers are allowed to charge a fee and bill for Medicaid and Medicare and bill your insurance company. If you're concerned about that, most providers don't require insurance. If you can't show it, they'll still vaccinate. And all public health clinics do not collect insurance, do not collect a fee. So if you're concerned, I would recommend you just come to one of our public health clinics.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that because someone might go to a provider, and they ask for insurance, and they say, oh, my God, I got this bill now. But you can still go to your website, or 513relief.org, to find out where you can get it for
That's correct.
no cost. The other question I had, I understand that Children's Hospital, I had seen something, and now I want to make sure if this is true, is that Children's Hospital, there are children now being affected with COVID. Can you maybe give an update on what, I know we talked about hospitals in general, but now we're talking about, you know, babies and children being potentially affected, right?
Yes. So throughout the pandemic, there certainly have been children that have received or have gotten COVID-19, including to the point of needing hospitalization. And that holds true today. The big change with the Delta variant is that each person is able to infect up to eight more people. And so that holds true with children. So one child that gets COVID in a classroom is able to make eight other children, in theory, sick. And so the more kids that are sick, the more likelihood that a portion of them will eventually develop severe COVID.
And you talked about the bubble again, and you just mentioned school. You talked about that. So are schools, you've been working with a collective group, but if you're at school and you, somebody does have COVID as a child, you're saying you have to quarantine or find out how close you are? Or how does that work?
So my team is working very closely with the more than 200 schools within our jurisdiction in Hamilton County. And there are, so I shared kind of the outside-the-classroom setting, what's required for quarantine. In a school environment, there are some additional options for keeping kids in school. One of the major ways, actually, that a school can keep a child in the classroom is by wearing a mask, simply because the Infection Disease Control Manual, which governs how I quarantine people, says that if a child is a close contact and wearing a mask, they do not have to quarantine. So this is another great tool for keeping children within that classroom.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you was able to bring up that point.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. And so we will be talking in a few minutes about the county stand on masks and also on incentives. But Commissioner Dreehouse, if you had any comments.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Casterman, and thank you for Jennifer Mooney in the back of the room for being here as well. So yeah, thanks for the update. It's always very helpful information. I agree with Commissioner Reese. We've seen a lot of dramatic changes happening very quickly, and it's very concerning as our numbers continue to go up and the hospitalizations continue to go up, knowing that, you know, the vaccine is the most effective tool, keeping someone out of the hospital. I wanted to highlight something that you said about the incentives. So is it true that the $100 gift cards that are being utilized on all the mobile units, were those dollars from the state specifically for incentives or for incentive programs?
So we have about $650,000 dedicated to incentives out of one of our grant budgets, and the state is encouraging us to use them and actually might have additional funds beyond that once those dollars are gone.
Okay. Just curious, because I have been asked that question a couple of times about where is the money coming from for the incentives? And I'm glad to know that it's specifically sent down for that purpose, and that's
That's correct.
how it's being utilized.
Yep.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, it is very concerning how the numbers are going up and the young people that are being impacted. But we are not fearful. We are moving ahead boldly and using different strategies for sure to try to beat this enemy that is here right now. And I think we're doing about the best we can. We can always do better. But I will ask our administrator to talk for a minute about where we are with mask mandates within our own county building.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy to. So we do, as the board is aware, I put out a memo maybe two weeks or so ago now, once we started seeing increasing levels of COVID again in the community and increasing levels of the variant, which strongly recommends masking in county buildings. So if you come into this building, for example, everyone's, people coming into the building are strongly encouraged to mask. County employees under the board are strongly encouraged to mask. We have seen some departments in areas of the county take a little bit different approach. The courts are requiring masks when you come into the courthouse, and then individual judges within their courtrooms are able to do what they want for the safety of their courtroom. We've heard certainly from Commissioner Casterman about the rising, the continued rising levels, and maybe most concerning, the increased hospitalizations that we're seeing. We're also, as we're learning more about the interaction of the virus with vaccinated individuals, we are also understanding that our best, the prevailing wisdom is that the vaccine can still spread from individuals who can still spread from, from individuals who might be asymptomatic but vaccinated as well. So with all of that in place and recognizing the, the bit of ambiguity that comes around the idea of strongly encouraging masking, I'd recommend that we go back to a policy in our buildings, at least in public areas or for residents entering the building, of mandating masking when people come in. And once people get into their private work areas, et cetera, we would do what we have done in the past, and if people are in their private work area, they're not masking at that point in time. But at least as we are talking about the public areas of county buildings, that we would require masking, and that would also make it consistent with what we know the courts are doing as well. So if the board is supportive of that, I can put a memo out today or early tomorrow to the county workforce informing of that change.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese, did you have any comments as it relates to Jeff's statements?
Madam President, I just have one clarification. When you say county buildings, we're not talking about just this building. We're talking about all of the buildings that we own or that we're, because I know you, the other day, unlike cities, you know, there are others who are elected independently and run their departments, but we own the buildings per se, I guess. So would that be for all of our buildings, or are we talking about just the building that we are in?
Yeah, we would be talking about all county buildings. The only, and it's a good point you raise, Commissioner, the judiciary does have some authority over their buildings to run and operate their, the operations of the court in a safe manner. So they have already gone ahead and mandated masks for people coming in. So the policy that we would be implementing would be consistent with that already, so I don't really see any conflicts with what other offices might be doing at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
No, I, I understand the reason or the rationale behind a more strict policy at this moment in time. We've just gotten our updates, so I think this is appropriate time to increase what we're doing in the county buildings to make sure not only the public is safe, but our employees are safe. So I support the recommendation.
Thank you so much. So you have
Madam President, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
That of the administrator or our health commissioner, and I don't know if it's something we consider. Our state of emergency that we had passed so that we could get, I guess, qualify for grants and funding that would come down, had expired, I believe, and I'm just asking, are we headed to that level now as we see these numbers jumping? I just want to make sure we're able to, I guess, one of the rationales is make sure we qualify for whatever, additional funds, additional resources, or be able to get reimbursed for additional resources. Are we at that level now with this Delta running wild and us, you know, working, doing all we can? But are we, or should we be looking at something like that as the board, or is it too soon?
Thank you. I can answer that. I had brought up the discussion of state of emergency, and it's scheduled to be on our agenda to come up. As you said earlier, it was for, part of the purpose was financially, and it wouldn't be that purpose now, but just to indicate to our community and the residents that this is something that is very serious, and so we want to put a light on the fact that numbers are going up, more people are being impacted, we need people to get vaccinated. So I had recommended that we put it on our next commission meeting the following Thursday to go on there.
Thank you.
Madam President, to, to echo and reflect what, what you're saying, we'd touch base with Nick Crossley as well, and I don't think anything we have right now requires a declaration of emergency because of what the federal government has in place as it relates to FEMA reimbursement. That's always something we want to be aware of. Sometimes it can get a little bit ambiguous in terms of whether or not we need to have a declaration in place. I don't think the ARP requires us to have one in place either, but as you said, simply from a messaging perspective, there, there's value to the board having a state of emergency in place, especially when we see trends as Health Commissioner Kesterman indicated to us a little bit earlier.
Okay. And because of that, I'll, thanks, Jeff, we also have asked the Commissioner if he could come every staff meeting instead of every other staff meeting, so I appreciate that so much.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move forward. Our next item on the agenda is Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, and Commissioner Denise Drehouse is going to lead this discussion.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the members of HCRK who are in attendance. You know, while we talk a lot about COVID and, you know, the folks that we're losing to that pandemic, we are also losing people to overdose every day in Hamilton County. And so we've been meeting pretty rigorously throughout the pandemic, mostly virtually, to stay on top of the situation in Hamilton County related to addiction. We know we've got fentanyl in our community. We have had for a number of years. It's causing significant problems throughout every demographic in our community. And so I will introduce a resolution at the end of the presentation related to Overdose Awareness Day, which is coming up on August 31st. Of course, you're both invited to attend, and it'll be down, I believe it's at Fountain Square. But before we, you know, read that resolution and vote on that, I thought it might be helpful, as did the committee, to have some context around it and just get an update from the work that's happening with the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition. And so it's structured through six different subcommittees, and so there is a representative from all of the subcommittees here today to speak briefly about what each subcommittee is doing related to overdoses and addiction in the community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Megan Gosney. She's the director of HCRK.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Megan Gosney. Switch to the next one. I am responsible for the day-to-day work of the coalition, as well as overseeing our seventeen members, steering committee, as well as two federal grants that the coalition has, which is our county-wide quick-response team and law enforcement assisted diversion program. So as Commissioner Drehouse mentioned, in 2015, the Hamilton County Heroin Coalition was founded as a state of emergency under four pillars: prevention, treatment, interdiction, and harm reduction. In the past two years, we've also added two more, the faith and business communities. And in early 2020, we decided as a, as a coalition to change our name to the Addiction Response Coalition, to better reflect the work of this group and to be more inclusive of all the comprehensive work that we do. So as Commissioner Drehouse mentioned, we have six committee representatives today, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to our first one, which is Leah Dennis Ellsworth from Yumadot.
Is it, is it real? Good afternoon. My name is Leah Dennis Ellsworth. Again, Yumadot of Cincinnati. I am one of the co-chairs of the Addiction Response Coalition Prevention Committee with also Nicole Sisler of Prevention First. Our prevention goals include expanding outreach strategies to focus on the misuse of drugs and providing prevention education and intervention services to high-risk youth and families affected by the opioid crisis. We define high risk as those affected by drug overdoses and those living in epic centers of substance abuse. Today, Yumadot and Prevention First have joined forces with ARC to apply for prevention dollars to support ongoing efforts to decrease the number of youth drug overdoses impacted by the opioid abuse. Thanks to also $400 to state from the State Opioid Response Grant, funding provided by the Hamilton County Mental Health Recovery Service Board, Yumadot increased our community awareness and recruitment strategies to aggressively target high-risk youth, families, and senior population diagnosed with opioid use disorders. Other strategies consist of just the old-fashioned grassroots boots on the ground, being able to engage, relate to the client, relate to the resident right where they are. Other engagements included social media, yard signs, messaging through geofencing, radio ads. These ads identified substance abuse zip codes where we could go in and then create pop-up community outreach events to provide drug prevention information. We also relied on our partnerships with the faith-based community, Cincinnati Public School, treatment centers, housing developments, community civic and behavioral health organizations, and your court referrals, which expanded our kinship wraparound program, which increased our participation by 34%. The staff now has easy access to prevention credentialing, which is training that we're receiving now through the state and Prevention First to address the lack of diversity in the workforce field of prevention professionals. We thank you very much for the time today. I look forward to the continued participation and partnership with Hamilton County Arc to provide much-needed prevention and intervention services to residents of Hamilton County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm Neil Tiller with Talbert House, and I'm the co-chair of the Treatment Committee along with Pat Trippi, who's the CEO of the Mental Health and Recovery Board here in town. And our, and our, our goal is to do outreach and to expand treatment resources. Pretty straightforward, right? We're very pleased with the progress we've made these last few years. In doing so, we've been able to bring in more federal money through the SOAR, the Strategic Opiod Resources from the federal government. We were able to open up a engagement center over at the county building, the old ADA Center. We're very pleased with that. It's, it's a overdose center for people with overdose. We keep them for 10 to 14 days, really a, a model for the country, really and truly. So we want to make sure the barriers are taken away and people get into care and then referred out after that. This past year, we partnered with the healing communities to implement strategies throughout the county, and through the healing communities, which is a federal grant, they've allocated $900,000 in resources to our community. At first, we were unsure if that was going to happen, and through a lot of negotiations with the steering committee, we were able to see those resources being brought to bear. This study is trying to reduce by 40% overdoses in our community, and that's, happens in a number of ways. One, through Narcan education distribution. Second is through linkages to treatment, and finally through safer medication disposal. And all those things are happening. A very good example is that Camaria Tuhemba and John Young formed an African-American engagement work group that really started to do a lot of work in the faith community and the business community, trying to see how those two groups could work to expand work in the African-American community. Initially, the opioid problem was in the white community primarily, but quickly shifted into the African-American community. They identified this about two or three years ago and tried to work, and tried to work from there to try to expand that as quickly as possible and done a phenomenal job. And tried to get out and do this work ahead of time, and have really done an awesome job with that. As you can see, they had 300 Narcan kits distributed in the first three months. I just was on a meeting this morning where it's now up to almost 500 kits have been distributed, so really some terrific work has been done there. The Treatment Committee continues to look for other resources from the federal government. We are pleased that the state government also has some resources coming down in the state budget for the first time many years. There wasn't cuts this time, which we're surprised by, and maybe even a little bit more resources. So the Treatment Committee continues to look and make sure barriers aren't there and try to make sure more access is available in the community, and looking for innovative ways to make sure our community is served as much as possible. Any questions?
Thank you. Now, Neil, how many are actually on the Treatment Committee?
Well, the Treatment Committee has about six, six or seven people through something called the Recovery Link, which is the six big treatment agencies, along with Pat Trippi and Linda Gallagher.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
My name is Karstel Winston. I'm the district chief of EMS operations for the Cincinnati Fire Department, and I'm also one of the co-chairs for the Interdiction Committee, and I also serve along with Tom Signin, who is the chief of the Newtown Police Department, along with Trina Jackson, who is the director of reentry. And some of our focuses for the past year have been, first of all, as was explained, the LEAD program, which is that law, the law enforcement assisted diversion program, which can allow some of those low-level offenders not to be incarcerated, but to go through diversion. We've also focused on the expansion of the QRT program, which is a quick response technicians there who would go out into the field. And also another focus would be the Price Hill Hotspot Initiative, I'm sorry, initiative. And under that initiative there, they used, we gather resources, different agencies, there was data collection, and we've used all those things and harnessed those things to provide a continuum of care throughout the process. Another focus has been on the One Stop Resource Center. They're the ones who host the final Fridays of every month in giving needed resources to those who are in need. And I know as a fire department, one thing we really looked at is how we could better help, and one of the things we came up with was in our data gathering. So we've been able to share better information with our partners here of the coalition, and this has helped our QRTs, or those quick, those persons who go out there. We give them the information, and it's actually become almost real-time, where this dashboard updates every single hour, so that this part-time, two-person QRT program. I have to thank each and every one of you on the panel here. We appreciate what you've done for the coalition, and thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you so much. I know the numbers have really increased with the One Stop Resource Center, so that we know that the need is there. So, and I'm hoping that, and we haven't all, as a board, decided, when we look at a satellite office out in the northwest area, for one, what actually is going to be in that satellite area? But I could imagine that a One Stop Resource Center would be great out there also, so, and I'll allow my colleagues when we're finished to, if you had any questions about anything. So, okay? All right. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Jenny Mooney of Hamilton County Public Health, and I present on behalf of my two co-chairs for this committee, Linda Gallagher of the Mental Health Recovery Services Board and Tiffany Mattingly of the Health Collaborative. So just to kind of high level, principles of harm reduction aim to reduce harm caused by addiction by promoting health and encouraging positive change in communities. So we are really, really taking that and envisioning what harm reduction can mean. Some of the major efforts in this subcommittee have really expanded, especially during the pandemic, working to really create a multidisciplinary subcommittee with focused goals and efforts to reduce harm reduction associated with substance use. Notably, our syringe change program has expanded to work with community organizations who serve people who inject drugs, and they have noted finding paraphernalia or drug-using kinds of equipment around their property, and are now partnering with public health to set up programs to better engage with people and better dispose of used syringes. Our fentanyl test trip program is working collaboratively with businesses and our entertainment industry. This is really helping to drive that message that overdose is possible even if you do not use heroin or inject drugs because of the presence of fentanyl. With federal funding awarded in 2019, our surveillance efforts have dramatically expanded and allowed us to better partner with other jurisdictions as well as the state, so we can monitor overdoses. And our Hamilton County Public Health website houses a variety of data on our dashboard that includes syringe services data, Narcan distribution, overdose activity, and socio-demographics of folks that we're gathering information on. As part of this federal funding, and probably at the heart and the core of harm reduction is actually prevention, and so a lot of our efforts have expanded to focus on building a community of peers, providing healthcare education, and workforce development to support those people in recovery. Perhaps most importantly, our lives saved, and we value every single life. So the vast majority of harm reduction efforts has really involved a collaborative effort involving saving lives through the lock zone, or more, more easily spoken, Narcan, if you will. Hamilton County is fortunate to have collaborative efforts all focused on preserving life through driving Narcan into the community. So through the Ohio Department of Health's Project Dawn Grants, Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services funding for first responders, and Talbert House's Narcan efforts and partnership with the Mental Health Recovery Services Board and healing communities, so far in 2021, Hamilton County Public Health distributed over 7,600 doses of Narcan to the community. First responders, nonprofits, quick-response teams, and the Justice Center, but nearly 60% of all of Hamilton County Public Health doses were distributed through our syringe services program. our syringe services program. Talbert House has been able to distribute an additional 6,300 doses to various treatment agencies, mental health partners, and outreach channels. That's 14,000 doses of Narcan just this year so far alone. So our hope is really that this builds community awareness and that every life has value as we continue efforts to get Narcan to folks and changing that narrative around saving every life. Thank you for your attention. I'm happy to take any questions later if you have them or no.
Thank you so much, and you just made a great point, the value of life, because we get those overdose reports every week, and someone may look at the report and say, "Well, it's only six people." You know, "It's only 12 people." I think 12 is about the highest that I've seen in one week, but it doesn't matter if it's one, it's too many. And so I'd like to, the next time you guys come back, or whoever comes back, to just indicate to those that are listening, those in the audience, the numbers that we're talking about. But as you say, it's the value of life. So, and all of those that you've saved, they're not really on that list, you know, the fentanyl that's been given, I mean, the fentanyl that's been given out, but all the help that you've given to the ones that could have overdosed, I'm looking at 7,600 you mentioned earlier. So we need to put that all in perspective, and I also saw that Hamilton County is the highest number, which I don't know, was a little surprising to me. But maybe the next time, we can get some of those numbers in a summary of how many is impacted for the year and how many we've actually helped in that process that did not overdose. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Pastor Leslie Jones, and I am the chair of the Faith Community Committee. Our journey with HCR began in 2019 out of a Prevention in Faith conference that was held at New Jerusalem Baptist Church. We had over 150 faith leaders and members of congregations come together to train and to learn, to learn. That's really what we have been about as the Faith Committee. And from that experience, that began our journey. Where oftentimes, people come to the church and come to faith communities and ask us to contribute, but don't really invite us in. And I'm really glad and proud of the work that Commissioner Drehouse did in inviting us to come to the table and be at the table where information's coming out about grants, about funding, and being able to then connect our faith communities to those programs, and not just feel like we're being asked to do something, but also being willing to help us give back and get back into our communities. What we know is that people are mind, body, and spirit, and recovery is a part of that. And being a spiritual person, a spiritual person or a person of faith is very important in the recovery process. And so we've spent a lot of time over these last two years that we've been at this table, getting our clergy and our faith communities sort of up to par, what the terminology is. I know for me personally, beginning to use things like engaging with people who use drugs rather than just calling people addicts and things like that, were very significant in helping people in their recovery process. And so we committed to training, and we trained in the foundations of harm reduction, engaging with people who use drugs, and overdose prevention and response. We learned a lot about what harm reduction was and what it is, and how it is a justice movement that is very synergistic with faith. And so what we've been pushing is encouraging clergy, encouraging others to learn about harm reduction, and then to implement those things in their communities. One of the biggest things we had, we held an actual naloxone blessing where we brought the naloxone into the sanctuary. We held a service, and we had over 250 people there, and we, at that one service, actually gave out over 300 naloxone kits. That was a major, major milestone in educating people on how to use that. And so what we continue to do is grow our committee, and this year, we hope to implement our roundtable where we will have quarterly reports that we will do and quarterly conversations we will do with clergy and faith communities. And when I say faith communities, it's just that broad. It's not just one particular faith. It's not just one particular congregation, but we're trying to speak to the community of faith because people find themselves in crisis, and they go to what they're most comfortable with. It may not be the black church. It may not be the Catholic Church. It may not be the Episcopal Church. It may be Buddhists. It may be Hindus. It may be Jews. And so we have to make sure that all these communities are being educated. And so our goal is to raise awareness, and most importantly, that we're doing something unique in Hamilton County, that we actually have faith leaders sitting at the table where this information is being shared, and we can give firsthand input. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your support. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much. I'll open it up in a minute for any questions that my colleagues may have. I think I was at that first training that you had, from what I can remember, but anyway.
At New Jerusalem.
Yeah. So, okay. Are you the last speaker? We have one more. Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners. It's so great to see you. I'm Kevin Jones, regional president for Huntington Bank here for Southern Ohio and Kentucky. I co-chair the Business Committee of this group along with JB Bussie from Loth. We do this through the CRBC, which I know you're all familiar with, and through our Regional Assets and Community Improvement Committee. We are dedicated there to seeing businesses and business leaders utilize their expertise, their resources and experience, and networks to create workplace and community solutions to combat the ongoing opioid crisis in Hamilton County. As we all know, substance use disorder impacts all communities, workplaces, employers, employees, their families, partners, and children. Business leaders have an opportunity to take action to implement prevention and awareness programming, provide employees the necessary tools and skills they need to help identify and treat substance use disorder, and help connect employees to appropriate resources, treatment, and recovery supports. When business leaders take action, they are also addressing the workplace challenges such as productivity and absenteeism, healthcare costs, workplace safety, employee health and wellness, and potentially reentry back into the workplace. The Business Committee is working on a number of strategies and initiatives to give local business leaders insight to the magnitude of the problem of addiction, a better understanding of the work that the HARC and its partners and a synopsis, of what strategies have led to positive outcomes and substantial change in the workplace to support employees, employers who are struggling with substance use disorder. And for the record, I want to say the tremendous work that my colleagues on this committee are doing are frontline. As a business committee, we see this from a distance. I can't thank them enough for what they do, and it's an honor to be in front of you in a formal setting.
Thank you so much. I will open it up to Vice President Reese, if she has any questions or comments, and then I'll pass of a time back to you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation. This is my first presentation on the Hamilton County Addiction and Response Coalition, and I know that you all have been working several years before I got here, so I want to just thank you all for that. And this has been very helpful for me as the newest member of the commission, but certainly someone who has been working, was working on this issue when we were at the State House as a state representative and trying to get funding. My question, though, as we pull up to today's challenges, number one, if you would look at Ohio during tough times, liquor sales go up because, you know, people get down and out. And I'd asked the other day, and he said they are up. With that being said, those who maybe have an addiction, could someone maybe tell us, I know this is the report, what we were doing with the problem we already had in terms of trying to help people, but now when you put an overlay of COVID, not just from a perspective of, you know, are you going to catch COVID, but the perspective of having to stay in, not being able to come out, having to deal with, you know, maybe the bills and all the other things that come, or maybe got furloughed or something. Have we seen, could someone talk about that? Have we seen a change? And if we have, is there anything additional that maybe is not in this presentation that we would do differently as we go into kind of this new phase with this extra layer of challenges and pressure? Don't everybody fight over getting to the microphone.
Yeah, I was, I can't see from over here.
I'd like to address that. Since we are a minority, actually, organization, it has, that issue has hit us the greatest in terms of a lot of our cultural differences allow us to not talk about what's going on in our community, or even in our families. So the addiction has increased due to that loneliness, due to that being in the house, not knowing whether or not they could come out, and afraid to do that as well. So what has happened, our organization has done a lot of what we call well checks. And the well checks, you know, allow us to go out and to make sure that they are doing okay, because we have groups that they are scheduled to attend. And oftentimes, during the pandemic, that was really a major problem, of course. And so mental health became a really big issue that what we call collided with the pandemic. And so what happened, you had the addiction, and now you have mental health. And those two things colliding together with the pandemic increased the amount of even referrals that we were beginning to get when I had staff to come out. So it is a problem, and we're addressing it in that way. We actually took some of our funding to provide phones for our clients so that we can do telehealth with them. So, yes, we are really addressing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I think Neil wanted to say something.
Oh, yeah. One of the other things that we have done, part of our workforce development, some of our individuals and clients who have recovered, we have developed a workforce development program that allows them to also work with us as peer recovery staff, and they go out with us to the communities. And of course, because they have had the lived experience, they are more apt to be able to engage, to be able to help our clients or help those residents to want to come into treatment. So we do have that, and actually, Umanat has five of them that we actually have trained, and they are called peer recovery specialists.
Thank you. Madam President, I have two more questions I had.
I can.
Neil, you had mentioned on your presentation, Treatment Committee and the engagement of African-American churches. And then Pastor Leslie Jones, you have a committee that deals with the faith. So there are two different committees, but are y'all together? Or how does that work, I guess? Because if the faith community, I'm sure you mentioned your work with New Jerusalem and other areas and at your church, and then on here, it says the Treatment Committee is also trying to reach out to African-American churches. So I'm trying to figure out, is that an area that African-American churches are in? I know my church, New Friendship Baptist, I better say that my bishop would be watching, Bishop Michael Mack. My church does participate, and we used to, right across the street, used to be the location from our church, and we helped a lot of people. But I wanted you to talk about that, because I know, Neil, you were saying we're trying to get into churches and...
So what is happening is actually now that we have the Faith Committee, part of the work that we're doing is having conversations and working cross the aisle with them to bring those clergy together, to talk with those clergy. Oftentimes, it's a lot of conversations I have, bring them back, bring it back to the committee, the steering committee. But the work that we're doing, we are talking about that and coordinating that, and with the African-American work group, which is where I first actually was working with that work group before I became the chair of the Faith Committee. So we are in conversation and working collaboratively to bring those relationships together.
On one occasion, Reverend called and said, "Hey, I need somebody to come over and do some training. I need some Narcan." We deployed resources. We've been out at Donald Jones's church to do a whole bunch of work. So our committees have been cross-training, and had we not had all these committees formed with Commissioner Drehouse's leadership, this wouldn't have happened, because now we're in the same meetings all the time, and so we know who to call and how to connect and, you know, pastor will say, "Hey, I need somebody. Can you give us some help?" And we'll just kind of, you know, trade phone numbers and get things done much, much easier than whatever happened before. So it's, it works pretty well.
Awesome. Thank you. Now, just my last comment, Madam President. I think our executive director, we have an executive director, I guess, for this program. And you're right, one death is too many, but at the same time, we do, we do get some of the numbers, and I know we're talking about COVID and this, and we were told that these numbers are jumping through the roof. So I wanted to kind of see the stuff that we're doing, you know, and are the numbers jumping through the roof? And then are there any recommendations that they may have for us, that they may need to do new tools in a COVID environment when you can't really do the, you can't, you don't have the personal interaction that maybe we were able to have prior to COVID? So we'd love to get that information as we're looking at our new budget, new way to go, priorities, et cetera, to make sure those are included. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Let me just give a little bit of broad view, I guess, conversation about the Hamilton County ARC. It was initially four committees, prevention, treatment, law enforcement, and public health. We added business community and faith community because we realized we were not connecting all the dots. The folks in the room were, but we didn't have everybody in the room. And so we brought everybody in the room. We are always open to the ideas of, you know, expansion, but the beauty of the group is two things. One is to collectively do work and connect dots with all these different kind of disciplines in the space of addiction. And so that's the beauty of the work that's done by these individuals and the teams. The other thing we do is advocate collectively. And so when you have, and it is a model for the state, when we go to the legislature and advocate for something, like the expansion of the quick response teams, the collective is so powerful, because it's not just one discipline, it's everybody saying the same thing. And so this group got together every other week, was it every week maybe during COVID? We ramped up the work because we realized people were isolated, and we, it was hard to connect, and so many people need to peer-to-peer. And so the agencies did a lot of, you know, a lot of telemedicine, teletherapy kind of things, and opened their doors as quickly as they could, when they could. But the work continued, and so the numbers in the annual report, and I think you both have a copy of the annual report in front of you, we generally do that in the spring, and we just, we did one this year. Some of the numbers are in there. But last year, we saw, we have a lot of people dying of overdose in this community, hundreds of people. And so other parts of the state saw a larger increase than we did, but we don't claim victory there, right? Because we're still losing people. And so I checked with the numbers with Jennifer Mooney, actually. So from January through May of this year, we've lost 145 people just this year so far. And so that gives you an idea of the numbers we're talking about and the need for the work. And so this commission, most recently, passed the expansion of the quick response teams into the African-American community, because we've seen a movement of especially the fentanyl being mixed in with drugs like cocaine. And so we passed that resolution a few weeks ago here, and that allowed us to expand what we know works, quick response team works. These are individuals that go out on the door and connect with people that have overdosed. If they haven't taken a transport to the hospital to get connected with treatment, we go, we get that data, and Winston, we talked about that, and then we go out on those doors and connect and try to get folks into treatment. So those are the kinds of things, kinds of strategies that have been employed so far, but we're always learning, and we're always learning from one another, and we're always trying to engage the community. So... So, we do have large meetings. I think they're quarterly. Now, things were in flux during COVID, but we are meeting with a large group of people interested in the community that want to engage with the Steering Committee and learn about what's going on and have some input. And so, we do those. We've been doing them virtually. We hope to get back in person, but they're pretty well attended, and I'll make sure that your offices, as always, are invited to participate in those meetings.
Thank you.
So, with that, I do have the proclamation. And so, this is, again, it's a recognition of Overdose Awareness Day. Thank you all for signing it. It'll be presented at the event on August 31st. The event really is to talk about the overdose epidemic in our community and try to remove some of the stigma that we so often see related to addiction. So, I will, I don't, I'm not going to read the resolution, but it does recognize August 31st, 2021 is Ohio Overdose Awareness Day, and I will move for approval of the proclamation.
So moved. Yes. I didn't know we had to move for...
Yeah, I was just a little surprised that we had to move.
I'm just trying to figure out, we voting on a proclamation? A resolution? We don't vote on a proclamation.
You just accepted into the record. Yeah, because we all signed it.
Yeah, approved.
But we certainly approve.
Definitely approve it.
Well, that's right.
Okay. All righty.
Okay. I just want to, again, thank everybody for coming in. Thanks so much to the Steering Committee members and to Megan for the presentation. It's been very, very helpful.
I can't hear you. I can't.
And I also wanted to publicly thank Commissioner Drehouse for leading this coalition, which is so important. So...
Okay. And you were saying there's going to be an event on the 31st? Where's the event?
It's on Fountain Square.
Okay.
It's the Overdose Awareness Day event on Fountain Square.
Okay. Thank you so much. We will move forward with Item 4, Community Development Block Grant Update. Emily Carnahan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet. As you probably know, we have 41 participating jurisdictions in the county that participate in the Community Development Block Grant Program. The City of Cincinnati is their own entitlement. Milford participates with Claremont. So, that gives us a few more that are not currently part of the program. So, as you can see, a little map. So, Glendale, Madeira, and Newtown are recent additions the past few years. Joy Pearson was very diligent about, you know, going out to the communities and sort of letting them know the potential benefits to their residents in the communities. And then we have, the purpose of why I'm here today is Marymont. The Village of Marymont has never joined the block grant program since its inception, and they have passed a resolution and signed their part of the cooperation agreement to join our program. So, we're very excited. They came to Joy and asked themselves and are really looking forward to myself and one of my coworkers going out there in a few weeks and letting them know what they can, what their residents in the community can sort of benefit, some different activities and projects that we can, we can help them accomplish through the block grant program. You'll also see Sims Township was in purple, they are also joining this year. As a township, they don't need the resolution and the cooperation agreement, though. So, this is just for Marymont, but I wanted to let you know that we have two new communities joining us, so we'll be up to 43. And then next slide, thank you. So, those are just some different examples of projects that Marymont can, you know, discuss with us about potentially implementing next year. So, they'll be joining now, and then that will allow HUD to sort of integrate them into our allocation. So, in our next 2022 grant, which will start next March, then they'll be able to join the program. Any questions?
Just a couple of questions. So, how many are eligible that we don't already have? How many are we trying to get in addition?
I believe there are four that are non-participating.
Okay. So, our number continues to get a little lower, so we were doing, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. So, a few years ago, we were at about 36. And as I mentioned, Joy worked on several of those, getting them to join. And then we have, Marymont is also all her, I can't take the credit for that. She went to their council meetings and talked with their, as well as James, and talked to their officials there and as well as Sims Township. So, that is thanks to Joy.
Thank you. And it's obviously a win-win for those who join in, and then, of course, the county is able to recoup some revenue. So, I heard you say earlier about who's advocating for CDBG participating communities, and all of our board is advocating, not just one commissioner, but all of us are advocating to get as many communities involved as we can.
Absolutely.
Because it's to our benefit to do that. I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Vice President Reese.
I just want to say that's good news.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, I also wanted to say that's good news. Yeah, it's great. It really helps us at the federal level, so thank you for the work.
Thanks.
Thank you. Am I understanding we have a resolution before us that needs to be passed today?
Yes.
Okay. So, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing cooperation agreement with the Village of Marymont for participation in the Hamilton County Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
So, how do they like to be called? Some people call it Marymont, some Marymont. What do they say, the people from there?
I think it's Marymont. That's how I always hear it. But I'm not from there, so I won't swear to that.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you so much. And welcome your promotion and all of that. It's so, yeah, exciting. I'd like to also say, and I didn't mention it, Jeff, we were kind of, as we look at incentives for our staff and those who are getting their vaccination, hopefully if they choose to do that, and those that have already done it, that we will bring a resolution forward on Thursday as it relates to monies being spent on county staff because it would be coming through our ARP program. Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, just briefly, if that's okay, Madam President. But I think you're correct. I think we talked today about incentives for the general public. We talked about increasing masking, want to try to do everything we possibly can to keep incentivizing people to get the vaccine, especially as we have, we're bringing workers back into the building, we're bringing the public back into the building, you got kids going back to school, so you got more and more mingling of the population that the more vaccines that our county employees have, the safer our employees are going to be, the safer their families are going to be, the safer the public is going to be that they're interacting with. So, we would like to bring forward a resolution. The board has been, is at the board's direction to come up with a plan for incentivizing the public and the county workforce. So, with your permission, we bring forward a resolution on Thursday, and we can discuss the specifics at that time to talk about what we would be doing to incentivize the county workforce, if that meets with your... Okay.
Thank you so much. I would like to open it up for any discussion from Vice President Reese. Comments before we close our meeting?
No, I don't have anything.
Just a second, Jackie. Commissioner Drehouse.
No, I look forward to the policy.
Okay. All righty. So, nothing coming forward. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Can I ask for a moment? I think Commissioner Reese wanted to vote on the reconsider...
Well, we asked, was there any discussion? Okay?
Is he ready to return?
Uh huh.
Can I ask for some more here?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.